Let's go, it's six, a little after six thirty, let's all make an order. Pat, can you please give the invitation, please?
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you again for the invitation to be here and participate. Let's pray. Loving and merciful God, in whom we live and move and have our being, your children are listening, we're gathered to plan for our common life together, quiet our hearts, quiet our minds, so that we hear your wisdom speaking. We ask your blessing this evening on all those gathered, our elected leaders, our community leaders, our citizens, our public servants. Unify us, God, for the common good. Keep us humble in our deliberations. Help us set aside any reluctance to new ways to generate mutual benefit. Inspire our best thinking. Spark our zeal for the flourishing of our public welfare. We come with servant hearts, Lord. We come to this responsibility and gift of governance. Keep a right spirit within us. In Christ's name, amen.
Let's lift the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Appreciate the large emphasis, even. Counsel, in your pocket, you do have the minutes from the September fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Do you want to make a motion to approve? Motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
A second. All in favor, or opposed for that, does there any changes or discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. At this time, as we have committee reports, I think Danny Chambers here would like to report for one, please.
All right. Counsel, Mr. Mayor. Tourism report for September. We've entered the September, which is our biggest tourism month. September ninth, we had the Kennet Cruisers Car Show. That same weekend, we had the Fall on the Arx Festival, so a lot of good things, brought several people into town. Currently, right now, the Duckland County Library, they're hosting the Crossroads, Change in Rural America. This is part of Museum on Main Street, it was collaboration between the Smithsonian Institute and Missouri Humanities Council. It was part of a grant that the that the library and the Chamber helped get here. Kennet was one of six locations chosen to host exhibit. It's on display now till October twenty-fifth. Has a lot of really neat information about rural America and how it's changed and how it's changing. And then, it's also part of it, it's got some stuff about Duckland County, and then there's some also historical stuff about Kennet on individuals and some other landmarks here. So, really cool, if you haven't had a chance to check it out, go there. And like I said, it'll be there till October twenty-fifth at the Kennet Library. And then, the big one is the Delta Fair. Twenty-six through, September twenty-sixth through September thirtieth. A lot of work goes into that, and so, thank, I'd like to thank the organizations that take the time to put that event on. All of them, not just with the Delta Fair Board, but there's others that are involved in that. The Delta Fair is our largest tourism draw of the year, so it kicks off with the Delta Fair Parade Tuesday night at five-thirty. Lineup will begin around four, around four. Instructions for the lineup will be on the Chamber's website and on the Chamber's Facebook page, and it's also in the DVD. So, if you don't have the DVD, you can subscribe to it. Let's see. The other thing, we have formed an Eclipse Committee for the Eclipse that's coming up on April the eighth of twenty twenty-four. We're currently working on print and digital material for that to attract visitors for that event. The other thing, we've been awarded a grant from the State of Missouri Division of Tourism. This year, it's a fifty-fifty ma, marketing matching grant. Last year, the grant was a match of seventy-five twenty-five. So, tonight, I'd like to ask that we allocate ten thousand from the Tourism Tax Fund for the fifty-fifty matching grant. This will allow for billboard, radio, print material to showcase the events for the next coming year.
So, you're asking for ten thousand?
Yes.
From the Tourism Tax Fund?
Over the space of the
Over the, yes, over the space of the
Yeah, there's Yeah, well, twenty of that is, you know, from a donation profile, we're expecting twenty-three thousand remaining after that. The Chamber's are approximately two thousand dollars a month, the Chamber's contract that comes out of that fund, but that fund also gets revenue from the lodging tax from all the hotels.
So, ongoing. Yep, so it's ongoing, so the more stuff we have here, hopefully, the more it gets.
How much is the grant?
It's a, the total would be twenty. And our part of, our part would be ten percent of it. And like, that's an overestimate because as far as materials and stuff, changes, you know, estimated high, so yeah, up to that, yes, sir.
We have a motion by the Congress to allocate ten thousand dollars from Tourism Tax to the Chamber for Tourism Promotion. We have a second. And now it's time for discussion.
I think it would be helpful for people to, because we've talked about how we have limited funds. I think it'd be helpful for people, if they don't already know, to know that tourism money that's in that fund can only be spent for tourism, it can't be included as part of our operating budget. So, it's like, the people think, well, I heard, you know, you're broke, why are you doing this? It's because it's a restricted fund account that those monies are in.
And that money is already in that account.
Yeah.
And they're going to come in and into that account as well.
As we've asked the Chamber of Commerce to oversee, oversee that money, to determine the placement of that money.
It's fully funded by the hotel tax.
Yes, yes.
Business.
So, the more, try to have the events and stuff that goes on in town, get it promoted, and it's kind of cyclical.
What other discussions do we have? Questions? The senior team will move to a vote, all in favor, approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, your pleasure.
Appreciate you.
Committee reports. You, and, yes, yes, yes. Animal control, yes.
The Humane Department met on November, September the eleventh. The committee made a recommendation that we fixed the two thousand seventeen van transmissions out. We got a bid for four thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars, seventy-three cents, with a three-year unlimited mileage warranty. That is a park block, if we can't find anybody, what would we do?
Does that answer?
Well, we did, that came up in the finance meeting, are you currently using that van?
She told us that it would be used, because right now, once they make the transports every other Saturday, there's no van in Kennet to pick it up.
One thing that came up in our meeting was that fuel expense was
That's another thing I need to ask, too, if I have a, would you take care of this first, and I'll get to that as well, okay?
Well, I was going to bring it up, too, that I've seen, I've seen that, it was actually brought up, that was a six thousand dollar, it better work, it was not pending. So, now it's down to four thousand.
Yeah, this is the estimate that she gave me the other night from Callahan Transmission out of Parkland.
And she had another one for thirty-two thousand for a call.
Thirty hundred?
Thirty, no.
Thirty thousand?
It was for a new one.
Oh, okay.
New transmission, so.
This was the best bid out of
It was six thousand three hundred eighteen dollars, four thousand one hundred ninety-nine.
For the, for the two years' months.
So, we have conflicting numbers?
Well, no, that's the number that they're, the bottom number that they're having.
We can redo it.
I would say they'll need to table that, it was, what I'd like, I was going to bring it up for all the department heads and committees. To me, because we did have a preliminary finance meeting last Friday. We didn't accomplish much, because there's a lot of fine tuning need to be done between the department heads and their committees, before we set up another finance meeting in the middle of October, once we have the month of September numbers in, and figure out how we need to move forward.
So, when we have another finance meeting, we need to go over the budget without the finance committee?
You all, the individual committees, I need, I need you all to go.
You all need to find, to go over your line items and your numbers, because there's some conflicting, there's some numbers that they stand out. And one of those was the fuel expense of animal control.
It is, it is
By putting another van on there, it will continue to go higher and higher, and then the overtime was another issue, we need the salaries, a third item.
The committee made a recommendation, we tried seven days a week, she said that's where the overtime was coming out. The committee made a recommendation to go back to five days a week.
So, you're not going to provide service on Saturday and Sunday, is that what you're saying?
She said that they went out when they got called, that they didn't need someone there the eight hours, whatever, day on Saturday or Sunday. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, so, she said they wouldn't go out on the weekend if they got called?
Yes, if they got called.
Instead of just being there all day?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought that's what they were doing, to this, we put it up, the, in fact, I called it on a Saturday, and says that we do work on Saturdays.
Yes, they have to go feed the dogs, clean the kennels. We had, the committee made a recommendation, and we tried it, that where they had one person on call, who worked Saturday and Sunday, but they were there for the eight hours, and she said that's where the overtime came out of, them being there that extra sixteen hours.
I'll just make a motion to table that bid for now that we have, for due
Do you want the information?
That's good.
A second, I'll get it.
Table for
First, there's discussion.
That's all, have a humane.
Did y'all hear that on the side? Table that, yeah, but I think it'd be wise to have a joint committee meeting, six, seven, or two, that, to, to emphasize, Mr. Fanoosis, it's quarter is up, end of September, so we do need every committee to go over the budget, see where we're going over, and see if that's a nominee, or we got to expect to need revisit checking. So, not just animal, but fire plate three, no worse. Okay, anything else on animal?
Nothing on animal, nothing on humane, no.
I want to add one more thing on the finance, since we were talking numbers, we got the numbers in, everything was down, as expected, because of the quarterly reporting, that was up. It happens every quarter, comparing to last month's, but here today, we're up twenty-five thousand nine oh two eighty-one, which is not much. All our numbers were down, except the use tax. Do you have anything from your borderline?
Well, twenty-five thousand, a lot of money for you and I, but for, for me and our budget, it's, it's possible, too.
We'll just monitor the trend and see where we're going next few months.
Anything else? Please fire three.
We had a committee meeting last night, and Mr. Spelling was back there.
We discussed tearing down five properties. I talked to you last night about it. We have some questions before we get started. Number one, we'd like to know how much it's going to cost to tear down those five properties. We'd like to know how, where the money's going to come from to tear them down.
Which properties, sir, we don't know?
There's, code enforcement put together a list of basically burnouts, and there's five properties. Can we go with it? So, basically, what I asked code enforcement to do is get us five of the big complaint properties, that we have, no matter where they're located in town. So, five biggest complaints are the burnouts. So, where, it would give us a good trial run, I like to get a price on it, contract it out, and then I like to get, see what might run to do it in-house.
That was another question, we had two, if the street department came to it, and if they'll be saved to it.
Well, that's, that's, one of our problems is we don't have the right size excavator for it.
Our excavator's a mini excavator, we don't have a full-size excavator.
I think the safety officer also pointed out that job description and the insurance issues with that as well. So, we're going to have to have a lot of changes with that, and then, well, anyway, let's get the bids, we'll see what we get.
Then, in the fifth question, we had
Then, to answer your question, where the money's coming from, it's usually the cleanup and beautification account, which right now has fifteen thousand six sixty-four dollars in it.
If we can do it in-house, all we got to pay for is tipping fees. We had the labor, we had the equipment, a lot of towns do it with backhoes, excavators, we're talking about the burnouts. Either have some with thumb or grapple, we're loaded, put in the bin, pack it down, we will next spot.
And our fifth question was the legal part of it, if we tear one of them down, will we ever be sued for tearing property?
That's the whole reason we're doing the process.
That's the reason we're doing it.
That was our questions we had.
And can you ask if we can be sued? We can be sued for anything, we'd be sued for sitting up here.
What is our probability of suing?
Well, that's why we have the hearings, and that's why we go through the due process, in order to cut, cut down the probability or the possibility of being sued. It's remote. I mean, we have two pending right now, but it's remote.
And that was a question brought up about the, was it funded for the part-time?
Yeah.
So, we're going to discuss that, we have a five, the committee meeting, when we look over the budget.
That's what we are hit.
That ain't in there, I can tell you, so it's cut out. The question was, and I thought the, my committee was bringing this up.
I got it, I hear, I'll bring it up.
The, the question was, before we start spending money on tearing down houses, the concern was, are we going to refund the employees that the money was taken away from? That was one of the questions that came up last night.
That's going to be the finance, this is coming from two different accounts.
That's what I'm saying.
But that's what the finance committee meeting, the joint meetings are wanting to have. That's the, that's what between the finance committee and everyone else involved.
Sure. Have you got an idea of when those, that meeting going to start, start?
Right now?
The finance committee meeting?
We, we're looking at the middle of October, after we, we usually get our numbers in around the twelve to the fifteen for the previous month. So, we want to see that those September numbers, so we can have the full quarter. And then, Jan will have a chance to have most of the bills paid for the quarter by that time.
But you all, as each individual committee, need to meet with your committees and go over your numbers before the finance committee meeting.
Correct.
If each department could, you know, I hope everybody's looking at the, if, like, the revenue expenses and comparing them to your budget, Lance saw, you know, you see something that looks out of whack, like Kenny, we've discussed, we need to be talking about that now, so that I can check into it, that we charge it to the right place, you know, whatever.
But I guess my, what I want to hold is up in the world very hard, the part-time run out in October.
Now, so, we got enough money to support that through the end of the year, the way we're operating. Now, the, the way we're operating right now, it was the understanding that we were going to revisit it in October, you know, to funding for the rest.
You've got your number pretty low, what you told me the other day, you know, the part-time.
From what we, Jan and I ran the report and team, I'm at the same
So, we're okay until the end of the
End of the year, for sure.
Potentially. If the majority is there, that changes, but
Well, you let us know.
But we're looking really good. We're looking really good. I do have one question before we get off that topic, Mayor, if you don't care. Do you want the code enforcement to go ahead and start the process to tear these houses down? Do you want him to go ahead and start? I mean, because, because when he starts this, then we're going to start incurring fees. As far as, you know, sending out letters, certified letters, that's going to be a fee, and then doing the title searches, and, or, I mean
Personally, I would ask the council to start it. I personally would, now, that's the council's vote to make that happen, but
I need to tell my guys tomorrow, you know, whether we need to go forward or not.
But we got to start cleaning our town up somewhere.
Agreed.
And so, you know, the money would be there, or it's going to be there. In order to start working on getting bids, I mean, I can get the bids first and come back to the council, that makes you feel more comfortable. But the in-house bid, we will not know, you know, we won't know till we dial into that a bit more, but
And, and that money that we're using that for, that is earmarked only for that beautification, so it can't be used anywhere else, it's not somewhere taken allocated?
Well, it is, it can be used.
It's allocated there.
Allocated.
Yes, it's not either part, just for the use.
General, general.
General revenue.
But there is enough money in that fund to pay for the certified letters and the title search fees and things, that is not coming out of the code enforcement.
No, we're going to die there, but no. So, we got to start somewhere, that's, that's the top rock, probably, with So, if you all like for them to proceed with that, or do you want to wait, that needs to be addressed?
I'll make a motion to proceed with that. Because I, I think we just can't start soon enough.
Okay, we have a motion? We have a second. Discussion. Mr. Bryant.
How long will it, Victor, how long will it take to do your part of that?
By the time it's done, between three and six months.
Three to six months? From the time you start?
Yes.
From today?
Or tomorrow?
Average, I mean, could be a little less, could be a little more.
We probably have, what, a hundred properties, that, at least, that we need to be on this list, but we're not going to do a big amount, we'll do a small chunk.
I've got, I've got fifty right now, and we're going to do five, but I mean, there's, there's more.
And that's what I talked about just those five, we talked about last night, that meaning
Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. So, let's Anything else from committees, departments, please, please?
Kenny, anything, things you'd like to talk about?
Mayor, council, I'd like to start this off on a good note. This past week, we received a grant from MoDOT. We received a, what's called a syntoxa oral test instrument, basically, it's going to assist us with people that are drunk while they're impaired, whether it be marijuana, heroin, meth, whatever, this, this kind of takes a oral sample of the suspect, and we've got test tubes and everything from MoDOT. This thing costs about five thousand dollars, we're one of eighteen departments in the state that got chosen for this grant. This is a lot to do with our participation in LECAC every year, you guys heard us talk about that, and also in our DWI and traffic enforcement that we do through MoDOT every year. You guys know, last year, Kennet faced problems, we've recognized as one of the top states, or top departments in cities or in state in DWI risk. So, all that stuff combined kind of made us qualify for this. We were not expecting it, we just got a call from MoDOT and said, hey, we're bringing this to you, and we got it this past week. We'll be going through some training on how to use this machine, hopefully, by October first, we'll start using it. Next, with the fair coming up, I'm sorry.
Good.
Okay.
Glad to hear.
With the fair coming up, Airport Road, we're going to ask the council to approve making Airport Road one-way. We do this every year, I talked to Terry earlier, we thought maybe earlier we did an ordinance on this, can't remember for sure, but
I'll check.
But I guess, fair's coming up next week, we need the council approval to go ahead and make this one-way, which way will it be going? It'll come off, off the bypass, immediately, it's on Park Street, and turn back east, that's good, so we get to the airport.
We gotta wait.
Wait would be a nightmare.
We have a motion?
Yes.
Motion, we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second, the motion is to make Airport Road one-way traffic? Any discussion?
Is it just during fair week?
Yes.
Yes, just fair week only.
Old town check is for fair.
So, it's starting, it's starting Tuesday morning and Saturday night, right? Tuesday morning to Saturday night?
It's, it's, traffic gets congested, it makes, it makes our job a lot easier than it
We'll start it on Tuesday, and we'll end it on Sunday morning.
Yeah, five o'clock.
Or Saturday night when they're working.
What, does it need to be done for setup, is there a lot of congestion during the setup period?
No.
No, okay.
No.
Street department will put up signs, I guess, Tuesday
A little after five o'clock, yeah.
That way, the sign will be up, we'll be sure and post it on our Facebook page.
Okay, motion, or any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Last thing I have, we would like, the committee has met, and we have discussed hiring of a patrolman. We're two officers short right now, hiring Hunter Sutton, who could begin working for us on October first, at a rate of eighteen dollars per hour, to go to eighteen fifty after six months.
I make motion?
We have a second. We have a discussion. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Free to hire them.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And, please, pardon, please.
Anything we can do about Electric Street here in the mornings and after the end of school? These kids, the parents are going for the kids off school there, well, they're, they're opening the door in the middle of the road instead of getting out on one side, so you got cars going like this, and then they open the door and jump out, and I don't, I mean, I don't know what we've anything about it or not.
We can try to get an off-ruin area, try to, if they've heard some of that, it'd be better if they were letting out on school grounds.
That's vast.
But they get too big a herd, and they don't get to school, or they get work, or whatever, and then, they brought it to school, we're trying to
It seems like our kids You're going to like, my kids stop off the road.
I'm ordering to get up.
Okay, before you sit down, just one second.
I'd like to compliment you on, on the job you and your officers have done this the last month. I've seen lots, lots of traffic stops, we're going to slow these people down, underage drivers, you know, Kenny's going to get you, that's, that's the best I can say.
Mr. Pelsey's still with them, because I had that report pulling up to start, so, I want to comment in the council tack, and I hope, there should be a copy on the code in from the public, but the PD, we have had two hundred and twenty-two stops the past two weeks. That's on top of the previous two weeks, but you had a high number there, I don't remember the number today in front of me, but out of that, ninety-one tickets, variety of reasons, we got, more importantly, demise, twenty-three millimeters, and twenty-four gallons off the streets. So, that's good work.
Thank you, Greg.
And then, one more thing on the fair, I didn't, I didn't run by committee, but I just thought of it, maybe we can use those radar trackers? Can we use those around the fair area, kind of, maybe try to keep the speed down? You got to talk about the
Yeah, you can talk about the speed enforcement.
Yes.
Yes.
Can we use that around the bypass, because, you know, have people cross the road, and they'll not at the fair?
If you got a particular, special spot you want them, we only have one that's operational right now, that we can, like, south bypass.
We can sit them on the south bypass.
Either of the
So, that's where the traffic's going to be coming in and going around.
So, east or westbound traffic, doesn't matter.
Doesn't make any difference.
Wherever you want to say it.
That'd be good, it's kind of, hopefully, to cherish and
We may have to take it off after a couple days, get it charged back up, get it back up there. We'll get it up there.
That's good.
Thank you.
I think
Good work.
I, I have a question, sorry.
Ricky was here upstairs.
No, sorry, this goes to Mr. Bryant's question about Electric Street and the kids.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Now, you can relax.
Anything else from committees or departments?
We, the street department, we're going to be committed to this, to provide the newspaper, we determine what streets we want to go ahead and work on, and those are going out to the newspaper shortly.
And we'll have bids coming back for those the next meeting or two, right? All righty, so we're going to move on. Alrighty, so we're gonna move on to unfinished business. Oh, no, I do have something, I apologize. Um, industrial committee, we didn't meet, and this is just for public information, um, um, at the hospital, the three grounds that we own, uh, there was a large dead tree. CLGW, very gracious to come out and put the tree down, the tree department, all did off. Looking a lot better, that's, that's cooperation, appreciate it, Jay. And CLGW, you guys taking care of that. Also, we're working, uh, the committee and Melissa Combs, they've, um, were wanting to market our properties a little better. So, the industrial prospect, perfected property, the compress, you'll notice it'll be getting cleaned up, inside and out, and some signage that will be placed out. So, just a heads up on that. All right, um, anything else, industrial committee? Okay, all right, let's move into unfinished business. In your packet, you have the ordinance for floodplain.
This, this is an ordinance, and it's quite lengthy, it's a model, it's adopting a model floodplain management ordinance. Uh, this is probably, what, fourth time we've done this. So, every four or five years, they decided that, State Missouri decides we need to pass another one. So, it's attached to the ordinance, and which is, the first reading is, it ordinance adopting a floodplain management ordinance for the city of Kennet.
Do we have a motion to approve this ordinance, as written, or as said? Motion? Second, we're ready. Uh, first reading's gonna be, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Take a reading.
Second reading, an ordinance adopting a floodplain management ordinance for the city of Kennet.
Will there be a motion?
Motion.
Motion, we have a second for- So, the motion on the floor is to adopt the floodplain ordinance, would be a roll call vote, you gonna start over here to Mr. I?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, thank you. All right, and, um, out of the discussion of trash dumpsters, roll-off bids. Um, is this, is county, you have anything to add to it, or you just want us to open them?
I just open them.
All right, go ahead, just carry it up. Do that.
Okay, first one's from Beeks Truck and Trailer LLC, dumpster bid for roll-offs. And one container dump, three hundred and ninety-five dollars, this bid for roll-off per dump, so it's one container dump, three ninety-five. Camo. Camo disposal. Three thirty-yard dumpsters, five hundred and fifty dollars per dumpster, flat fee. From Sharp's disposal. Total bid price, five hundred and fifty dollars per month. Price per size, two-yard, one-time weekly, forty dollars. Four-yard dumpster, one-time weekly, seventy dollars. Six-yard dumpster, one-time weekly, one hundred and ten dollars. So, it's total bid price, five hundred and fifty dollars a month. Is that for both the dumpsters and the roll-offs?
That's for, that's pretty much-
That's for the sanitation dumpsters?
Yeah.
Not the, not the roll-offs?
Right.
So, that's, you only have one bid for sanitation dumpsters. There's two bids for roll-off dumpsters. So, let's do one at a time on the vote.
Okay. Okay. Camo disposals for dumpsters.
You said three thirty on the dumpsters?
Three thirty-yard dumpsters, that doesn't say roll-off. Okay.
What was the five fifty flat fee, was that not for roll-off?
Five, five fifty for, each roll-off.
Per dumpster, flat fee. Which doesn't explain, three thirty-yard dumpsters, five fifty per dumpster, flat fee. So, I guess if they do- So, it's sixteen fifty? Appears to be what it is. And then Beeks is one bid for roll-offs per dump, three ninety-five.
We only have one sanitation bid and two roll-off bids.
Mayor, if I may, on the, uh, roll-off bid for the compost, that won't be monthly, that will be per dumpster. 'Cause sometimes those are tanning a couple times a week, depending on how much stuff we get out there. So, it will be a per dumpster charge.
And they pick up and haul off, it's, it's that charge?
Yes.
That's not fifty.
Yes.
Hey, Mayor, I do have a question. If I understand that camo isn't camo anymore, can that bid even be looked at?
It's re- No, it's not, it's repurposed or something like that.
Repurposed.
Repurposed, yes.
It was bid as camo, it was camo at the time, it was bid, I believe, and then, um, repurposed, and camo does have a business license with the city, I'll be verify that. And repurpose is supposed to get a business license with the city, and that name may change at that time.
And the actual invoice that you sent me does have both names on it. It has camo and repurpose on it. I don't know if they're together or why. This bid just says camo.
So, let's start with sanitation, we have one bid. We have a motion to approve the, the bid. We have a motion, um, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Okay, it's twenty seconds. Discussion on the sanitation one.
Would you repeat the sanitation?
Yes.
So, it's-
Is that the one for Sharp?
Yes, sir.
Bid price is five fifty a month. But then it has, then breaks it down, price per size.
Was it asked for?
The job, the job.
Could you explain?
Explain the placement.
Can we come up with that?
Yes, sir. It's that placement.
That's what we asked for. They asked for a- This is for the, two yards, one time a week, forty dollars. That's what the bid paper asked for. And then, four yards, one time a week, is seventy, and a six yard, one time a week, is eighty. But you have four, four yards, four three yards, and one six yard.
And then it asks for you to talk about the process.
What's that total gonna be? Five fifty.
Five hundred and fifty dollars.
Five fifty for all those.
For city dumpsters.
In addition, it's no-
These dumpsters are located throughout all the departments.
Yeah.
What, roll number of dumpsters again, I'm sorry? There was four.
What, four?
Eight, nine, there was ten, which I took the street department dumpster.
So, nine dumpsters.
Nine, nine dumpsters, five hundred and fifty dollars, one time per month.
One week? Per week.
One time a week.
Week.
And, you know, I had asked for the billings to be simple, if you needed to go, it's like that, so that- And I can't do that. That'd be awesome. It'd be all on one invoice, because we were getting separate things for each, you know, and that was very confusing. So, by having it put on one thing, and just listed departments, that's where a lot of people were confused.
Jay, do you know how much we were paying up, up to now, for all those nine?
Five fifty a month.
So, it's been the same way? Just a continuation of the same?
The only thing that changed is y'all swapped out of two yards for a four yard on the bid sheet.
We do have a second, and any more questions, discussion?
Five hundred and fifty per week.
Now- Per month.
No, per month. Big toughish one.
Unless you wanna pay that, I mean.
I wanna get that clear.
Any other questions? All in favor of, in the sanitation bid, bids, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. The roll-off bid? This is the compost, boys. Okay. Come up, Beeks.
It's roll-offs per dump. One container dump, three ninety-five. Camo. Three thirty-yard dumpsters, five fifty per dumpster. Flat fee.
So, three ninety-five and five fifty, it's apple to apple. Do you understand it?
How many, how many dumpsters are at the compost?
There's three sitting out there.
And don't you say plus tonnage on there or anything?
No tonnage or anything.
They didn't ask for tonnage, it's a flat fee.
This will be done.
Flat fee. That's the, that's the basis.
How, how many do you, you can pick out of their month?
Three times a week or?
I just, it depends, there's three out there, and-
Average, once, you dump it once, once a week, twice a week?
Well, it's- As good weeks, they end up one, on the report, so it's-
Three times a month?
Is that correct?
Probably.
For that time period. But I mean, they could come in tomorrow and take two of them out, or three, because sometimes you'll get one or two full and call them, it might be a day before they get there. So, they may come, take two out at a time, bring two back. And then, it just, a lot depends on how much we get in there, so.
Typically, we've, we've been paying by tonnage, we pay a tipping fee and a tonnage fee. This is a flat fee, so if you have a feather in there, you could have a little concrete, it's the same price.
Yeah, we, it, I think it was one ninety-five plus tonnage before.
We had six hundred and fifty dollars in revenue that went into the dumpster last two weeks, but we didn't have to dump it.
Okay. And I think the last time we dumped, I think Jay sent me a bill for over a thousand dollars, what, twelve hundred?
But, I, you and I have a distance, I got a call, um, and that was actually an overpayment, so I haven't sent you that. They sent me an updated invoice, and we got a credit, so anyway, it's a, I just forwarded it to you when I get it, because I don't, um, understand all that.
Or those, they own two. We have three ninety-five and they own five fifty, flat fee.
We have a motion to approve either or.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to do that before we have more discussion. We need a motion.
Please.
Motion.
All right, we have a second. Second, we have a second over here, we're twenty.
Which one?
Uh, this is for the roll-off.
I know, which, which roll?
Which bid?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but it's kind of that's all we can.
I'll, I'll do it for the lower one, I guess, as being just for discussion purposes.
Okay. Is that your second still?
Yeah.
You, you mentioned that there, that there was so much money came in for the roll-off. Unless he's changed it, the revenue does not always match the roll-off.
No, right.
They periodically check, they're bringing the money in, but it doesn't always match each roll-off that goes off. Because at times, they'll put you in one dumpster, me in the next, the money still goes in the pot. So, that's not a fair evaluation of, uh, that we took in six hundred dollars or whatever it was for that one roll-off.
Hard to determine.
Yeah, unless they, you know, change their bookkeeping out there completely, that would be, you know, a fair assumption, you have to look at it on a return basis.
Will it be closer to the same though, by not having a tonnage?
No, but it, it, cause- If there's already some truck and a trailer at one, he'll send the next person over to the other dumpster.
I just, you know, for-
Convenience of the people coming in, of who dumps and what dumps.
You're talking about the price, we're paying tonnage now, this is going to be flat, it probably will be cheaper.
I would think it would probably, it wouldn't be, I'm just saying, that it can't match the dollars that are reported to-
Do we average on how much we bring in?
I just hope they understood the, the bid process, because there's some cheap prices, and them roll-off boxes can get pretty heavy, and somebody can go under on that.
We, we do, Steve, I don't have them with me, but we've averaged it before, but like Randy was saying, if you have a, a load of concrete and a bunch of stuff, it can be real expensive. And then the next one might have a couple of box or mattress, or something, real light, but it almost averages out sometimes, maybe. But it seems like we were losing money most of the time a little bit. We, we were more doing it as a service credit tenant. It wasn't a moneymaker, yes.
When we set this up, and I was down there, we knew that we were underwriting dumpsters out of the location fund, in order to have a place for people to take things. Had a cheaper rate than having a dumpster put in your yard.
And we raised-
Put the prices in, we knew that they, we were actually losing money on most of them.
And we raised them, and then we- What do you pay for those, what account are you taking that money out of?
Goes in to and comes out of the location.
Okay. So, that's where you can see how much we're bringing in and how much is going out.
I can have reports with the council.
Yeah, if you don't mind do that, see how much we're bringing in and how much is going out, out of that account?
Any more discussions? The motion on the floor is to approve the lowest bid, it looks like it's three ninety-five per dump. Any more discussions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on into, uh, we have a zoning change for the Sutton property, which was supposed to been taken care of last meeting, it got overlooked, they'll take care of it tonight. Uh, this is, uh, this is, we had, we held a hearing on it, uh, August fifteenth. Um, there was no discussion. The planning zoning commission, they met, they approved it. So, it just needed to be a vote from you all to make this official. So, do we have a motion to approve the zoning request at two twenty-six oh eight Highway four twelve from R one to D two?
I'm okay with that.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Let's not break all that. All right, we'll move on into, in your packet, you have a lease agreement with survival flights.
And does describe what they're leasing this time?
Yes. I did a-
Motion.
A motion to, to approve the lease as written?
You should have the copy of it, which-
Yeah, we do now.
Okay. And it has, and it has on the back of it, it has a diagram of the fire station with the highlighted portion being the lease.
Right.
We have a motion to approve the agreement as written?
I'll second.
Second? Discussions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
It says maintenance, maintenance, does that mean we, we have to drive the, the cleaning of that thing too, or are they gonna, they gonna clean it, or how's that gonna operate?
No. Endless of service of heating and cooling.
Any department, in the last twenty-three years I've been, forty years, always cleaned their own buildings, and will continue to do the same, sir.
So, you're cleaning up for the survival?
No, they will clean their own buildings.
That's my question.
Good.
They clean them.
And it says, with everything, and it, this process is in me.
So, for the public's information, this is the lease amount for twenty-five hundred dollars per month, um, for them to occupy a portion, which is, um, I can't find the word for it, but a small portion. Two miles worth of, uh, the new fire station number two. Uh, this money, um, I'm gonna suppose we're allocating the full twenty-five hundred to the payment, to the long payment? Is that part of the motion, Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, any more discussion?
I just wanna thank Terry and whomever worked to put this together, it was very helpful. See the contract and to see the space, which was much larger than I would have guessed, it looks to me like it's almost as much as the fire department needs in that building. No, it's not, okay, okay, good to know, and that, uh, it looks to me like they're getting a good deal. It's a brand-new building, you know, the utilities are covered for them, it, it just looks like a very good deal for them, so.
It's a good, it's a good deal for us, too.
And for us, too, it's more important.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, before you move on.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, if you could sign that tonight, so I can-
Very signed.
Tomorrow. Thank you, I miss print it.
Actually, hasn't. Um, new business, discuss rock damage to vehicle, I believe this, uh, street video of the popular business.
Is that what this picture is?
Yes.
Um, what happened is, the other day, we had a, a citizen whose truck was damaged by a rock, and in order to try to get the gentleman taken care of, and not have to drag it out, I asked them to go ahead and take it out of the general expense fund. I understand that that was, uh, objected to, that I couldn't make that decision, that's exactly correct, I cannot. But I can bring it to the council for us to make that decision, that is the, was the intent from the beginning. I would like to see it taken care of in a manner that does not require the street department or the fire department-
or the fire department, or whoever, to have a separate, uh, a separate fund for taking care of these items, because this is gonna come up again, we know that. So, um, my suggestion was the general expense. But I do not have the ability to make that decision. I want to have y'all tell us tonight where that is going to come out of.
Do we have any insurance for that?
It's under the insurance.
Does that need insurance?
No, but. Yes, we do have insurance, but it's not.
Okay.
We had talked in one stage on budgeting, having, uh, a line item, uninsured expenses, you know, for, I mean, not only for this, but for other things that happen for that person's expense limit. But do the tightness of the budgeting we inputted in.
So.
Is it being taken care of?
Not yet, we're waiting on the vote. I didn't wanna, I wanted everything. It's not especially that. It will be if you approve it.
Checks been cut, everything, right?
So, may I, right on, if it.
Why is the estimated cost about nine hundred dollars?
It's right here, it's in your packet. Seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Do you want a motion?
Uh, please, I don't have, no one's, Mr. Palmer, did you make a motion?
No, I, I want the, first of all, where do we wanna get it out of?
I, I agree with what you said. You still have any more general expense?
Can I make a motion?
Second?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Uh, Ms. Bell?
I just wanna ask, so, general expense, general admin, correct? General revenue fund that will take.
General revenue fund, correct.
But, and so, my line item's gonna be general expense, general admin. Thank you.
What that Miss Alia's line item's good for?
Yeah, well, general, you know, it's two different generals there.
All right, uh, motion on the floor, I repeat, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars, fifty-eight cents coming out of general revenue fund. Uh, there's a second, so any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, my check, please. All right, um, in your packet, you have the revenue expenditures. I know we need to approve it, but do we have any questions? That goes back to our committees needing to overview their.
Yeah, we need to review everything.
All right, any questions? If not any, all in favor of approving the revenue expenditures? Are there a motion to approve?
You don't have a motion yet.
Motion to approve. Hurrying myself along over here.
Motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Corrections or changes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Also, you have bank balances in your packet. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
To approve? We have a motion, we have a second? We have a second. Discussion, changes, questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. Um, it's not on the agenda, but.
No, we don't have to put on the, that's just.
We don't need to approve it. Figures, CLGW? We dispute it.
Yeah, we have.
We have. We have, we have done it before.
In your packet, you have a CLGW expenses. Do we have a motion to accept them as written? A motion, do we have a second? We have a second, Mr. Carter? Changes, discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Also, in, not in your budgets, I got received today, um.
Yeah, well, it should, it's a contract, okay? It should.
We have a contract for typical buyer of taxable fuel or used by state or nonprofit education, by the city of Kennet, basically. It's the WEX cards, it's our fuel cards at the city, all the departments use for their fuel. Um, basically, it's a contract. I assume that's the same contract we've entered into every year since then. So, um, I do have to make a signature on it, but I'll need your all's approval to do such. So is there a motion to approve?
Can we tag it and make sure, I mean, are we sure that that's what we've used in the past?
WEXs.
Where?
Yes.
We don't. That's when we buy fuel.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Sure.
We have a second? Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, that would conclude the business?
All right.
All right? Yes.
I would like to make a motion and we put the, the single hall trash issue on, rather than ordinance, put it on the ballot in April.
I don't want any motion, I have to use.
Well, yeah, well, you're asking me to. Yeah, I think you need to, you should have a motion to ask and prepare that ordinance.
Should.
And that, and that be prepared and ready by the next.
Yes, that's me.
That's my motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Can I ask a question?
After, after the second?
Uh, city like us, one of me is on the ten. They haven't even said they would do this yet. So should we work for them?
Yes. Well, it sounds like to me that they're ready to do it.
Well, they're, they're, all they're.
And that's what I.
The board has not. They, they have not voted to do that, no. All we've done is, is give them, give them the authority to look at it.
Let's go this route. We have a motion on the floor, we can have it, we, we don't have to have a second, it'll just die. Do we have a second? Motion does not care. All right, uh, any other new business? Public count book, yes, sir.
Uh, soon we have received no bids for museum work. I'd like permission to rebid that. They had some inquiries with, asking for more details. You know, for work was to be done. See if we can't try to get something done on that.
Okay.[1614.61]